Check one, two. Check one, two. One, two, three, four. One, two, three, four.
Good evening. Welcome to the Town of Gilbert's study session for January 23, 2024. I will call this meeting to order. We only have one item on our agenda this evening. Discussion and presentation of Northwest Gilbert redevelopment and revitalization update. And I see Amanda Elliott there waiting to present. Hi, Amanda.
Hi. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. My name is Amanda Elliott, and I serve as the redevelopment program manager for the town of Gilbert. And I am here tonight, as Mayor suggested, to chat with you about Northwest Gilbert. Tonight, we are seeking direction from Councilor Anod. If I can get this. Nope. Pardon me one moment? That's okay. No worries. Okay. All right. Apologies. So we are here to get your nod to proceed with public outreach for a Northwest Gilbert redevelopment area boundary and seek any initial feedback you may have on that boundary as we move into a public process. Gilbert staff and town council has been carefully monitoring Northwest Gilbert for over 10 years. And in fiscal year 1415, staff brought before council data regarding the status of Northwest Gilbert. The data indicated a need for revitalization efforts. And in 2018, staff sought council direction regarding a path for revitalization, which included seeking direction from the public, from the business community, and organizations like the Urban Land Institute. And in every instance that we were before council, council directed staff to proceed. But there were some time-sensitive community initiatives that caused us to pause. But I just wanted to reiterate that even during those pauses, this initiative has remained a wildly important goal. So we've had our eyes set on Northwest for a considerable amount of time. And so today, we're here once again to give this council an opportunity to seek direction or to provide direction for a redevelopment area in Northwest. Across the United States, there are many examples of the rise and fall of great American cities. And I'm sure we can all think of some off the top of our head. But Gilbert has made a long-term commitment to ensuring that areas in Gilbert break the cycle of decline. And there are many terms that can be used for breaking the cycle. Revitalization, reinvestment, and redevelopment. So what does that actually mean? Revitalization or redevelopment and reinvestment is an opportunity for the community to utilize a unified vision from the voter-approved general plan and build upon it through a redevelopment plan that develops specific goals and tactics and stem decline in mature areas like Northwest Gilbert. These tools and tactics accomplish a number of things, including improving infrastructure, enhancing quality of life, attracting development, encouraging reinvestment, and retaining or increasing property values. Historically, Northwest Gilbert has been an employment area. And as recent as 2020 is a growth area. So what's a growth area? Every 10 to 20 years, Gilbert voters decide whether or not to adopt a new general plan. The voter-approved 2020 plan identified Northwest as a growth area or an area that has adequate infrastructure constructed and multimodal transportation plan to support a variety of uses. It's concentrated in employment and commerce and is focused on economic sustainability. In this map, the gold thatched portion is the Northwest growth area that was approved in the general plan. Its shape is unique because it's a contiguous area of employment from baseline road to just north of Warner and Arizona Avenue to just west of Gilbert Road. The Northwest growth area has a mix of industries and the largest concentration of jobs for all of Gilbert. While the area has only 2.3% of the town's population, it has over 20% of the town's employment. So that is quite considerable when you measure that in comparison to the other employment areas. This geographic area has certainly attracted major employers within science, technology, engineering, and math-related occupations. It has a low vacancy rate of 4.5%. It has a significant amount of Gilbert's industrial product. And as we know, the market is certainly very hot in industrial right now and has a number of unique attractions for Gilbert. But while the Northwest growth area has many positive traits, there's also factors that are making it harder for it to compete with other areas. This includes aging infrastructure, properties and parcels with absentee owners, vacant infill sites with no particular development plan. And we've heard from the community that they felt like there was no real defined area between Mesa to the north and Chandler to the west, both of whom have redevelopment areas in place surrounding Northwest. In 2019, at the direction of council, staff commissioned the Urban Land Institute, who brought together a panel of industry experts across multiple disciplines. And they discussed market potential, planning and design, development strategies, and implementation strategies for Northwest. The TAP also, through its program, identified that Gilbert should, via the use of data, examine a buffer radius around the Northwest growth area to ensure that deterioration and aging hadn't proliferated outside of that growth area. But of course, there was more to the story than just the growth area. So as staff continued to compile data about Northwest growth area or the area thatched in gold, it became clear that the signs of maturity weren't limited to the growth area alone. So here, we've drawn a circle in blue that generally identifies Northwest Gilbert at large. And you'll note that the Heritage District is not included because it is its own council-adopted redevelopment area with its own plan. So what data did we use as we looked at opportunities for revitalization? We started with the Arizona revised statutes, which identifies nine findings of fact. These include dominance of defective or inadequate street layout, deterioration of site or other improvements, conditions that endanger life or property, faulty lot layout, diversity of ownership, tax or special assessment, pardon me, delinquency, unsanitary or unsafe conditions, obsolete subdivision plating, and defective or unusual conditions of title. In utilizing teams across the town, we were able to examine this area with these findings of necessity. And I'm just going to highlight a couple of them for the purpose of time today. But the first, what we're going to talk about is dominance of defective or inadequate street layout. I think this one is really clear in the Northwest growth area and beyond as the uses in this area have changed. It was predominantly industrial use that we've seen transition at one point to office. And now we're seeing transition again as we have seen more work-from-home options. But the dominance of defective or inadequate street layout is really related to the idea that we have a need for on-street parking on both sides of the street. That is also essentially, we have the on-street parking needs, but we also have manufacturing, distribution, and warehouse in the area that has semi-trucks that need to get through these streets. And so there's a conflict point ultimately between these two uses. This is not, this is not unique to Gilbert to have these kind of instances. This is just part of a natural aging process that happens in a community. As we look at, as we look at conditions that endanger life or property, we are looking at things that cause fire hazards, potential crime. And so those type of things are abandoned structures, vacant properties, outdoor storage that could be a potential fire hazard. We also looked at special, pardon me. We also looked at the, the tax or special assessment rate. And I wanted to pull up the exact number for you. So according to Maricopa County Assessor, this area did have a slightly higher rate of parcels with a foreclosure history at 13.6% compared to the entire town at 12.46. But what was really interesting is when we compared the tax liens, Northwest Gilbert had 82% of its tax liens compared with its other employment corridors. We also look at faulty lot layouts. So there's examples across Northwest Gilbert in which small infill parcels cannot develop to the standards because of their factors like their size or access. And so this really presents an opportunity for Gilbert staff to work with property owners to vision opportunities for these sites. And as we examined the factor deterioration of site, staff looked at a number of neglect factors listed here. Listed there. There we go. A number of neglect factors. These apply to both residential and business areas. And as we look at this map, this is not a map of the entire town. This is a map of that kind of extended Northwest area. And as we looked at this, this area Northwest had nearly double the rate of code cases as the town at 19.5 cases per 1,000 residents. So we can see that those code compliance issues are proliferating beyond the Northwest growth area. But we also look at business cases for revitalization. And so we looked at, you know, two cases in particular. One, Infusion Soft, who was a CRM, a client relations management software company. They had their headquarters in Northwest Gilbert and had been subletting a building. And as they grew, there were no other buildings that really met their needs. And they ultimately moved 100,000 square feet to Chandler. We saw a similar scenario with Silent Air, who's a manufacturer of HVAC systems. And they were also prevented from expanding in the area. But in this case, we were able to work to retain them to find a property that met their needs south of the 202 in Gilbert. And we've also seen opportunities to work with businesses on an entire block scale. So take, for example, this block of Arizona Avenue and Obispo. This is where office, retail, and hotel uses are adjacent to manufacturing and distribution. We know that when GoDaddy was leasing in this area, that parking became challenging. And again, it's an inefficiency in the mix of uses. And so staff has been working with the property owners in the area to solve for some of the challenges so we can continue to retain our great employers and destinations. And so what else have we heard from the public to date? We shopped with them an idea of a potential tool lending program where yard and maintenance tools could be borrowed from the town to help fight neighborhood neglect. We discussed our paint reuse program and block wall program and emergency and minor home repair program. And they noted that they would love to see more opportunities in which we can promote those so that everyone knows about those opportunities and programs. We heard from HOAs that they would like assistance in examining opportunities to reduce their maintenance costs. So for example, allowing them to transition grass retention basins to zero scape, ultimately helping them save on water and landscaping costs. And we've even heard things like streets, parks, and commercial centers are just simply beginning to show their age and could benefit from revitalization and reinvestment. Like other redevelopment efforts, the town has undergone an extensive public outreach effort, including a development of a website landing page, multiple town-wide surveys focused on Northwest Gilbert, two Northwest employment business walks with the Chamber in which we met with hundreds of businesses and surveyed them. We had Northwest Gilbert Roundtable with the Chamber. We've held virtual public open houses, open office hours. But we really live by this philosophy that when we think we've done enough to engage, we need to engage more. And that's what we intend to do through this process. To highlight our most recent public engagement, we held a virtual open house with 173 participants. We asked them a number of questions, but one of the questions we asked was, what word comes to mind when you think of Northwest revitalization? And this is the word cloud that was generated from their feedback. As you can see, it is overwhelmingly exciting. People are excited about it. And there's a lot of positive energy around revitalization opportunities. We also drew that radius again around the Northwest growth area and asked the public to contribute pins to an online interactive map of specific revitalization opportunities they'd like to report. The interactive map was located on Northwest Gilbert's landing page. And if we are able to move forward with discussing a boundary with the public, we would reengage this page and continue to accept pins and respond to the public. We also asked the public about their priorities for Northwest revitalization. And so of the 174 residents who showed up, these were their top five responses. Increase visual appeal, solve for traffic and congestion, maintenance and upkeep of area, increase safety, and attract business. But none of this has been done in a bubble. Two committees were formed as a means to brainstorm, review best practices, vet ideas, and provide direction regarding the Northwest growth area. The first was a technical committee comprised of each department across the town. And the second is a steering committee, which was comprised of business owners, residents, developers, architects and contractors, land use attorneys, educational partners, community leaders, and town staff. Through these committees, both internal and external, we were able to draft a vision plan for the growth area that could help provide some guidance for revitalization opportunities. And as we look through that vision plan, we're already seeing some of those opportunities come to fruition. So ultimately, what does this really mean? Revitalization, reinvestment, and redevelopment are used interchangeably. However, in Arizona, the state revised statutes provides a mechanism through law in which a community can designate an area of focus for revitalization. These are known as redevelopment areas. And this designation demonstrates that the town is committed to reinvestment within that specified boundary. It provides a focus on an area for a designated period of 10 years in which the community imparts goals and tactics to reverse or stem deteriorating trends and improve the image of an employment area or residential neighborhood. But the legal requirements, terminologies, the data, all the technical jargon related to the revised statutes, quite frankly, can be really cumbersome. And so as such, staff has a website landing page to answer a myriad of questions in the FAQ section. And these questions have not only answered questions that we've received from the public, but ones that we received in public settings, like our council study sessions or retreats. And as additional questions are received, we add them to the FAQ. So we'll just keep a running list of those. And so before we can begin working with the residents, businesses, property owners, and departments to identify the how, you know, the goals and the tactics behind redevelopment that would be compiled into a 10-year redevelopment plan, the Arizona revised statutes requires a determination of the boundary. So where are we going to focus those efforts? And as previously stated, the data suggests that deterioration has proliferated beyond that Northwest growth area, that gold thatched portion in this map. So if council agrees, the intent would be for staff to bring forth the growth area and that larger boundary circumference to discuss with the public, internal and external steering committees, Gilbert commissions, and Gilbert Chamber to really seek input on where that boundary should lie. And once feedback has been received, staff will return to council and study session with the data, feedback, and recommendations for a boundary and ultimately come to council with a boundary decision. Our intent would be to bring that before the end of the fiscal year. So we're hoping to get that back to you in May or June. And that will be dependent on how much public input we need as we kind of go through some iterations. So with that, we're seeking, again today, a nod to proceed with discussing a potential boundary with the public, looking at what tools could be applicable and that the public wants us to bring forward. And certainly, any initial feedback you may have on the boundary.
Thank you, Amanda. You can breathe now.
Thank you. I'm trying to meet the timeframe, so.
I know, I know, I know. And I appreciate that, but I realize that you, it didn't sound like you were breathing in there. So does anyone have any comments or questions for Amanda? Councilmember Tilke?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Amanda, for that great presentation. Could you go back to the boundary map? Thanks. So just a couple of comments. One, I'm very excited that we're bringing this forward. I know I've had many conversations with your team over the years. And I think we're talking 12 to 15 years. We've been having these conversations. And we knew that this was going to be important to look at our aging portion of our community as we're continuing to grow in other portions of the community. And so if I had my druthers, we would have started this 10 years ago. But I know we weren't able to. So I'm very happy we're going to move forward now. So first and foremost, I want to say, let's get moving and start that community outreach again. I know some of the trends of, in the workplace and businesses, all of those things have changed a bit over the last couple of years. So an update from that perspective would be very important. The risk that we have by not doing anything puts us in a position where we have an aging and deteriorating portion of our community, where there's many beautiful homes there, don't get me wrong. But there are some areas because we kind of hopscotched when we developed. And so we don't want to ignore that area at all. So I guess my bottom line is, let's get moving. Let's, you know, try to be back in three months if we think that's acceptable. If you feel like you need more time, come back and ask for some more time. On the boundaries, I am, I'm very happy that we're going to extend them a little bit further. I think when we had our conversation, I would prefer, instead of a circle, that we actually go along the main arterials. Otherwise, you're cutting, you know, actual communities in half. And that would be very difficult to manage. So I'm excited that we're moving forward. I'd love to be part of this project as some type of council liaison, whatever the council decides. But I'd be happy to be part of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Kaprowski?
Thank you. I just have a comment on the boundaries in terms of, I think this is good timing, probably overdue. It's a great area to invest in. In terms of the boundaries, I know that Councilmember Tilke just mentioned following arterial roadways. And I, I agree with not trying to separate different neighborhoods. But I also feel that there are some areas where you would want to make sure that you include both sides of a major roadway, such as Gilbert Road. And now that I'm looking at this map a little bit closer, it may not even be a roadway boundary. We actually have the consolidated canal that follows really closely to your blue line. And that may be a natural boundary that would not disconnect neighborhoods, but include the areas of Gilbert Road outside of the Heritage District to the north and a little bit farther east. And so that's my initial suggestion. And then to follow the Chandler boundary to the south. I think my biggest comment is to make sure that we include Gilbert Road, but also east of Gilbert Road, probably to Burke, and then potentially using the consolidated canal as that geographic boundary.
I saw a thumbs up from Vice Mayor Anderson. Did you see that? Okay. Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Buckley?
I don't have a question. I just want to say, I'm very excited to see this. And I think the timing is, is good, just like the other council members mentioned. I lived in this area, kind of right in the middle of that area, for like 18 years. And I did, even though, you know, I was raising my family and not into the surroundings, I did notice, though, toward the end of my, my 10-year living there, that things were going down. And especially on that McQueen going toward baseline area. So I'm, I'm excited, and I'm with Kathy. I would love to be a part of this and, you know, see it, see it all grow. I, and, and I think I've chatted a little bit with Dan about that. But I would like to see this boundary maybe extended out to Val Vista because Val Vista is, I think that area and Val Vista Lakes were built around the same time. And they're becoming aging. I know that makes it a huge area, but I think it would be beneficial to maybe tag that in with the rest and the phasing. But I'm, I'm excited about this project.
Councilmember Tilke came up next.
Thanks, Mayor. I know you're just looking for feedback from us, so you're getting that. But it's my understanding that we're not making the final today on the, on that, that you'll be receiving feedback from the community and then bringing back all of that so we can make those decisions as well. But I, I appreciate that we're all looking at expanding that out a little further than what maybe what we originally thought. Thank you.
Councilmember Bon Jovani?
Thank you, Mayor. Thumbs up from me. I do like the ideas of having a more defined boundary than just a semicircle there.
Mayor, Councilmember Bon Jovani, thank you so much. And, and the radius was just our opportunity to look at the data. So thank you. Yes, we will definitely work with the public and our property owners and business owners to better define that boundary.
Amanda, I think you know my, my thoughts, but I'll just share them so the rest of the council knows. I think this is long overdue. I have been part of this project since you've been working on the Northwest corridor, sat through the ULI study when it was done here in the council dais. Been hoping and wishing that we were moving this forward faster than we were. Councilmember Tilke even commented on that, that it's, it is definitely overdue. I do definitely believe we need to expand the boundaries, looking forward to the community's feedback on that. I've always found it so difficult to look at the boundary of the Northwest corridor because it just doesn't make sense, right? You need it to have some sort of a semblance of organization in the way it is right now. It doesn't, it doesn't have that. And I know it happened because of how the growth. And I know it happened because of how the growth happened and the timing and all of that. But definitely need some definition. Love the comment that Councilmember Kaprowski made about like a natural boundary. That's a really great, that's some really great feedback. So very excited that we're moving forward. I'd already told Dan that I would love to continue to be involved in this since I was from the very beginning. And I think Councilmember Torgeson has a comment.
Yeah, I just want to say, first, I appreciate all of this because I've had the opportunity to work with yourself and Dan for a long time. And Councilmember Kaprowski's note that the, the canal is there is something that, that's very natural. And going back to a discussion we had maybe six or eight years ago, this even gives an opportunity in a, in a different kind of way of taking the Heritage District, because it's in the center of this, and bringing it a little bit more forward, which it's great to have something that can, that vibrancy expand out of there in the center. So I just want to say thank you and I look forward to seeing what's happening. And thank you for the time Mayor.
Thank you, anything else? Seeing none, thank you Amanda, appreciate your time.
Thank you Mayor and Council, appreciate you.
You did a great job.
Tried to keep you right on time, 5:30. Thank you all, I appreciate your feedback.
And we appreciate you and, and take it forward, we're excited. I will go ahead and adjourn this study session and we have an executive session upstairs.